In today's meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors, we will start today with our pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Today is the 232nd anniversary of signing the constitution.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with item one, Board of Supervisors Matters, and I'll begin with Supervisor Valero.
All right. Keep on forgetting. All right. Good morning to Tulare County. So I just wanted to kind of do a shout out right now with the new county flag that you see to your right and brought to you by the members of this dais, making it an official county flag. It's awesome.
Very good, Vanna.
Yeah. Thank you to everyone who made that possible. I will share that last week I was able to ride on Engine One with my colleague Supervisor Shaklian out at the Tulare County Fair Parade. It was a great opportunity to be there and to, yeah, to be present in all things going on throughout our county. With that, last Wednesday, I also attended the Northern Tulare County Water Alliance with state officials that came to discuss our pending projects with the state. Still difficult and a challenging process, given that our vision of the NTCWA is being hindered by the NERO money and other detours. Thankfully, though, we are seeing that Monson-Sultana project will be moving forward with a vocal commitment of funds from last week's meeting. And also, Yerem Seville will be proceeding with its application for the next phase, and believe we have a strong voice in that, too. On Thursday of last week, I was able to attend the T-CAG City of Dinuba Paseo Roosevelt Ribbon Cutting. It was an amazing opportunity to really now connect the neighborhood of the Viscaia Homes to Roosevelt Elementary. This was a struggle for many parents that they had to kind of transport their kids due to just unsafe conditions. And so now there is a beautiful walkway with landscape that connects the community to the school. And so again, it was done in record time as well, right before school started. I was also able to attend the Visalia Rescue Mission banquet. It was a packed, full hall, and so we were able to recognize just the struggles and the trials that a lot of our homeless community faces. And we're able to hear a story of a woman and her daughter, and they both were up on stage speaking and just the struggles that they've gone through. But now they're able to persevere, and the daughter was able to just graduate recently from UCLA and is helping her mom out, and they're really, and they're really just working at, again, eradicating a lot of the issues that we have in this community. I also was able to attend the London Playground Committee meeting on Thursday as well, only a few dollars away to realizing a beautiful playground next to the community center in the community of London. On Friday of last week, I also attended the National Latino Police Association Dinner. And then on Saturday, I attended the League of Mexican-American Women Luncheon. This group basically gets money to then give two scholarships throughout all of our schools in Tulare County, and so the luncheon is one of those events that raises funds for doing so. In addition to that, I had the honor of doing the welcome at the Miss Dinuba Pageant on Saturday as well. Tonight, I will be hosting my first town hall, and that will be in the community of Monson-Sultana at the Sultana Elementary School. Looking forward to hearing all of the SWAC strength weaknesses, opportunities, and concerns of that community. On Wednesday, I will be in Wasco in the morning doing a video shoot for Meocar, and so looking forward to elevating the awareness of Meocar and the opportunities that families and communities can have by just downloading an app and paying four dollars an hour or thirty-five dollars a day to use a vehicle to and from. And so I'm excited to really bring awareness to that. And that afternoon, ag committee meeting, and we will be revisiting the moratorium on Hemp. We have individuals coming to the ag committee meeting to discuss reasons for wanting this in the county, and of course, it's going to be first discussed at the ag committee before bringing it onto the dais. On Thursday, I will be at Step Up Youth Summit at Rawhide, giving a welcome to all the youth that will be focused on providing a youth challenge project. And so this is an opportunity to really talk with the youth and share with them why service is important and why we really need to tackle some of our major issues with youth involvement and youth voice. Later on that afternoon, I'll be at Kings River East GSA meeting, and then later on that evening at Government Plaza for the art collection. And so looking forward to that and the ability to bring more art into our government spaces. And then on Friday, I'll be speaking at the Southern California Edison Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration. So thank you, Brian Thornburn, for that opportunity. And then I will be also attending the Farmersville Aquatic Complex grand opening. I know that's in your district, but because it's a vision of ours in Arosi to see something like that happen. And just to mention, so there was a project that I was really looking forward to doing, and that was pooches in the pool over the summer. And I began to realize in District Four, we have no county kind of pool or aquatic complex, so it was really hard. I asked Woodlake, the city of Woodlake with the high school there, got denied, but that's fine. And then I went to Dinuba and asked Dinuba, and they said they would look into it. And so hopefully someone from HHSA Animal Services, we can look at that as a potential for the future. But again, pooches in the pool, but nonetheless, going there to realize the vision and see how it can be done in Arosi. And then on Saturday, I will be attending the Woodlake Fight Against Hunger Run. So I will be doing the walk, not the run, and so I'm looking forward to that and helping the food pantry out in Woodlake. And then later on that evening, Changing Minds Festival to support youth at risk in the District Four area. And that is all, and sorry for my long-winded presentation.
All right. Bring your pooches to Farmersville. That's what I heard. Supervisor Shaklian?
Thank you. First off, I would like to congratulate the Visalia Rawhide on their minor league cow, cow league championship. It's the first time in forty years that they've brought it home, so congratulations to the Rawhide. I, too, attended the 9/11 ceremony with the Sheriff and Fire Department, very nice showing and remembrance there. I afterwards, too, was whisked away to the fair parade, and that was my first time at the Tulare County Fair Parade, and I was, they like let all the schools out in Tulare, it looked like on that day, so it's a special day. The next day, I attended the quilt ceremony and ribbon cutting for the fair. Let's see, next week, we have, as Supervisor Valero mentioned, the Government Plaza Art Reception. Very excited about that, bringing public art into our workspace. That'll be from five to seven, and I hope everybody that is there at Government Plaza getting off work stops by and checks out the artwork. On Friday, I will be emceeing the Corporate Games Lip Sync Contest. I don't know if we have any, I know the DA's office used to always participate in the corporate games. I don't know if they are this year. We'll see if Tim can do some lip sync. Also, Friday through Sunday, this weekend, is the home show at the Visalia Convention Center, so I encourage everyone to go and check out what they have there. On Monday, the 23rd, I will be attending the Seroptimists of Tulare County Happy Hour at the Vintage Press in Visalia at 5:30. And this is a time that they open up, talk about Seroptimists, and let other women know what's going on. They're an incredible organization, and they do a lot for young women here in Tulare County. So this is an open invitation to any of the ladies out there, Tulare County staff. Hit me up if you want to go. I'd love to have you go with me and learn all about Seroptimists, or just have a cocktail and maybe a baby pumpkin, who knows? The next day, I'll be leaving for El Dorado County for our Rural Counties Representatives of California Conference, so I'm looking forward to that. And then on Sunday, the 29th, we have the Centennial Celebration of the End of the Trail, and I will be there at Moonies Grove to celebrate that. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Got a few things that I wanted to, a few public events I wanted to highlight this week. The Early Mart Rotary Club has a meeting tomorrow at 7:00 a.m. and asked me to keynote speak at that event, and so bright and early morning for me tomorrow, but I will be there and look forward to it. It's a great group that really does try to make a difference in Early Mart. We have a Space Planning Ad Hoc Committee meeting that's taking place tomorrow at 1:30, so Supervisor Townsend and myself will be there for that. The Retirement Board has an Investment Committee meeting Wednesday at 3:30 at the Tassera Chambers. On the 23rd of September, which is Monday, the day after, I mean, I'm really getting old. I started on this board at age twenty-four, you know, birthdays weren't, you know, they were exciting at that time. Now I turned thirty-five on Sunday, and so, man, it's just not as exciting. My wife said, "What do you want to do for your birthday?" And it's like, it's just another day. I'm feeling old. So anyways, enough of me feeling old.
I got t-shirts settled.
So on the, on the 23rd, which is the day after my birthday, there's a Night at the Library event in the community of Tulare. That's always a great event that goes from 5:30 to 8:30 where they raise money for the Tulare Library Foundation. And that, if you go and have a chance to go see that building, that library is really an incredible facility in the community of Tulare, so really look forward to having that long be present in our community. On the 25th, next Wednesday, there's a Retirement Board meeting at 8:30. On the 26th, there's an interesting meeting being convened in Early Mart regarding the sustainability of the community and how the community can strategically position itself for growth in the future. And I think that it's a, it's going to be an interesting conversation because a lot of people always look to the county for what we can do to help with infrastructure and laying the foundation. But at the end of the day, if we're not working with the Public Utility District, which is the body that's in charge of the infrastructure that is very necessary for growth, the water and sewer, it's very difficult to move forward. So I look forward to that conversation. That will be in the evening in Early Mart. On Friday at 8:30, next Friday, the 27th, is the Ag Ventures Golf Tournament. That's a wonderful event, and that's really another great organization that does an awful lot to help educate the youth in our county and even from out of the county schools about agriculture and its positive impacts on our society and our economy, and they do a great job. On the 28th, which is next Saturday, NAMI will be having their annual walk at the Delago Park in Tulare. That kicks off at nine o'clock. That's always a great event, and I feel like it gets bigger and bigger every year with the various teams that are walking to support the end of stigma regarding the mentally ill in our society and Tulare County. On October 2nd, since we don't meet for a few weeks, there's a Sunrise Rotary Presentation in Tulare. I will be keynoting that event as well, and that, too, is at 6:30 in the morning, so look forward to that. Nothing like being at the top of your game that early. Then later that afternoon, there's a Laughco meeting right here in these chambers. And then lastly, on Saturday, October 5th, Happy Trails will be having their annual Denim to Diamonds Dinner, or they might have changed the name, but they're my neighbor, so they're a great organization and do a wonderful job providing resources and services to not only children with disabilities, but all the way up to veterans dealing with the mental disorders that they deal with when they return from service. So it's really a wonderful, wonderful organization, and I encourage anyone who's available and interested in supporting it to come on out. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Cocktails at your house?
Sure, if you'd like. Pre-gaming. All right. Supervisor Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to Supervisor Vanderpool, congratulations on getting your driver's permit, finally. Well, I don't have a long one because Chairman Crocker and I attended a trip to Washington, D.C. this last week, and it was a wonderful opportunity to go over. There were several organizations that were having meetings, but the primary reason was that the President did call for seven western states to go back and have the supervisors from the counties from these, from the seven western states to go back and to have a county day at the White House. And all of the issues that were brought up are pertinent to, to the things that we deal with regularly here. So I was interested in it, and the chairman asked if I'd also like to attend and to tag along to with some other groups with RCRC and NACO and CSAC and some of those. So what it did was it stretched out the trip to have meetings Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday over there, and it was just a great opportunity. We had accessibility to our senators, to our congressmen. I was, my birthday was actually on, on when, on Thursday, and that was the day that we were at, at the White House for the county day. And in the middle of the presentations, in the middle of the conversations, they made an announcement that they had a surprise visitor, and it turned out to be Vice President Mike Pence came in. So I told everybody he made that special appearance just for my birthday, and so was very happy to see him. But it was really an honor to be there and to be able to meet him, and the Secretary of the Interior was there, the Drug czar was there. We had a lot of very high-ranking officials that we were able to talk to, and I was just very impressed with the accessibility from, from the Capitol to the White House and how much they, they listened to our concerns. Our last meeting that we had was with the Forest Service, and just a time that we were able to, to sit in a room, just, just a few of us there in the room, and talk about in a lot of detail the things that we need to see happen here in our area. So thank you for, Mr. Chairman, for inviting me to go along to that. That was a great time for me, and I'm sure one of many. And it does kind of, one of the biggest surprises that I've had really is the accessibility to, first of all, our state legislators, and now to, also to the federal legislators. I thought that would be something that would take years and years to develop, and really it's here because of the work of people that, that were before us. We already have that accessibility, and so I've been very impressed with that and look forward to sort of building on those relationships. So after getting back and trying to recover from that, from that trip and a couple of red-eye flights on the way over, on the way back, I will also be tomorrow with, as Supervisor Vanderpool said, in the Space Planning Ad Hoc Meeting, which I'm really happy to be a part of that as an architect, something that, you know, I can relate to and look at the long-term planning for the county and the needs of the, especially facilities needs in the county. So looking forward to talking about those things. If we had unlimited budgets, it'd be a lot more fun, but it just adds to the challenge that we, that we don't, so. And after that, on Thursday, I'll be having my second town hall meeting, this time up in Hot Springs for the mountain communities down there in the southeastern part of the county, and so I'll be joined by others here, elected officials and, and department heads from the county, and so that ought to be a good time talking about some of their concerns down there. And I will also attend the art reception on Thursday evening that Supervisor Shaklian mentioned, and will be attending the RCRC Conference next week. So looking forward to all of those things. Thank you.
Very good. I also attended Washington, and so the, the only thing I really want to highlight for today's purposes is just expand upon the meeting that we had with the Forest Service. I think that there was good discussion, good dialogue. We talked with the individual who is in charge of stewardship contracts and good neighbor authorities, which would primarily be of interest for our county as far as facilitating forest health. And they're very open to it. Really, they, they offered their expertise as far as being able to be a resource for the region and for the individual forest as the way they're broken down, and they strongly encouraged us to continue to develop projects and to develop the best method forward via our Sequoia National Forest, our supervisor, and our District Rangers to work on defining what those projects were. So more homework, more, more work as far as figuring out what that looks like for the county, but they were willing and supportive. They went through different aspects as far as why one was better than the other, depending on what the goals and objectives of the, of the local community were. So I thought that was very helpful. I am glad that you allowed me to participate in your birthday party. It was very nice to meet the, the Vice President. It was really, it was really pretty awesome, and, and just, you know, and the Drug czar really, he really kind of hit a lot of notes, just talking about opioids as well as methamphetamines and how that's devastating our country, and, you know, how the federal government and the White House in particular are trying to get engaged and involved. I know that they are planning a trip to California, I believe, in the upcoming future, in the next few days or so, maybe next week, to look at the homeless issue, but also as it relates to addictions. And, you know, one of the, one of the key takeaways that he mentioned was that he wanted to shift the dynamic from talking about an opioid crisis to an addiction crisis. He has a son, I believe, that's in, is thirty months clean, in recovery, and so he's, has a direct impact to that, as well as he shared the president's, when, I believe it was his brother, that had an addiction issue as well, passed away. So it was, it was very moving, and, and it was, it was great information, and, you know, outside of all the actual meetings, it's just great to be able to collaborate with our peers from throughout the western states, throughout California. We were sitting, or I was sitting close by with, with a couple of San Diego County supervisors, and so, you know, from little old Mariposa to San Diego County, you know, we had good representation from California that week. The GSP's groundwater sustainability plans are out, are coming out soon, and so I'm sure staff is well aware. I appreciate RMA, you know, attending many of the GSA meetings and now beginning to start reviewing those plans and seeing what the impacts are to our counties, to our county and to our, the various regions of that. That's going to have a tremendous impact on agriculture and our communities as it regard, in regards to groundwater pumping. This Thursday, I have a San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control just Board of Directors meeting. The art collection opening is, very excited about that. It's going to be great. As Supervisor Valero mentioned, Farmersville is having their Aquatic Center grand opening this Friday. On Sunday, there is an immigration forum that I've been asked to speak at in Lindsay. And then next week, there is a meeting for the San Joaquin Valley Blueprint. This is a water plan that is trying to get the San Joaquin Valley into have a direction to provide the state to get us into sustainability. So being able to, to make sure that agriculture and communities continue to thrive in light of stigma and other regulations. RCRC's annual conference will also be next week, and I'll be attending that, so very much looking forward to that. It's always a great conference, a lot of good information that's very relevant to us. It's not quite as expansive as some of the other conferences, so it's a little more intimate, although it's still, you know, it's not teeny-tiny, but it's, it's a lot of ability to interact with speakers and other participants, so should be very good. And with that, we are going to move on to item two, present a proclamation recognizing September 2019 as National Literacy Month in Tulare County. I believe our librarian has some things to say?
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, we're gonna, there's a program. It's just, the computer's gonna read it off for us. Siri, I think, has it covered.
Good morning, everyone. Chairman Crocker, members of the board, Mr. Britt and Ms. Peterson. Really happy to be here and honored today to come to the Board of Supervisors to celebrate literacy. September is National Literacy Month, and we want to share a little bit about the importance that it is to our community. The Tulare County Library's Read to Succeed Literacy Program has served the county for over nineteen years to provide adult and family literacy throughout the county. An essential part of the library, the literacy team offers a variety of programs to help adults and families. I'd like to introduce Edward Williams, our library program and literacy specialist, to provide a brief presentation about Read to Succeed. Thank you.
Morning. How are you?
Morning.
My name is Edward William. I'm the literacy coordinator. I want to talk about the accomplishments of our literacy program. The backbone of our program is truly our tutors and our staff and what the learners can accomplish and what they've shown. In 2018, 2019, we had four hundred and forty-five adult learners served. That was through one-on-one tutoring, ESL classes, HHSA client referrals, and the Tulare County Jail. That was seventy volunteers providing twenty-nine hundred hours of service. We served three hundred and eighty-five families through Sharon. She does our early learning for families. This last Friday, we had eighty, eighty families come in through four sessions, and we do that once a month. We, we also track our goals of what learners accomplish. We, two hundred and twenty-seven of basic learning goals, like being able to read and write, checking out library items. Two hundred and thirteen were community, family, and work goals. This is driver's license, voting, finding a job, you know, things like that. We've also got a career online high school program where we have a state program where it's through scholarships through the state library. We awarded twelve scholarships last year. We had four graduates, and we have twenty-two available right now. Because of this number continually growing, the state has, we have the attention of the state, so we've been able to get more. This is a, changes the lives of a lot of people. We've had people come in maybe fifteen years after feeling that they don't need their high school diploma, and some of them are able to get by. They, they, they're able to cope in some way, but eventually that reality of needing that high school diploma sets in, and they, they come in. Sometimes I have people crying. You know, this is a life-changing moment for them, and, and we're there for them. The staff is there for them, and the tutors are there for them. We've also paired up with a lot of partners in the community. Health and Human Services Agency, which is where we get some of our client referrals, the Tulare County Sheriff's Department. We have Kim Torres, where she works there with Margarita. They're, they're busy working today, actually. The Friends of the Tulare County Library, the Tulare County Library Foundation, Sequoia Adult Education Consortium provides support. Children's Path to Literacy at Woodlake, we have staff going to that, and the Tulare County Office of Education and the Visalia Adult School, we pair up with them. So that about wraps it up. I do kind of want to go back and emphasize these particular goals. We're with those learners and tutors every step of the way. We're kind of like, we're cheering them on, and we get those monthly reports from the tutors to see exactly what they're working on. Every situation is unique. As adults get older, their specific needs are very, are very unique. Someone may, may come in wanting to, to just be able to read a book to their grandchildren. Somebody may, someone else may come in and want to get that high school diploma, or they may want to pass a driver's license. We had a learner just recently who said, "Because I'm able to start applying for a job, focus on high school again," and work on her, getting her driver's license, this has changed her life. She feels like she is in control of her life now. So that's what we want to... So that's what we want to empower these individuals with. And I do briefly want to have Sujana, she's one of our tutors, how this impacts her as a tutor and what she's seen as she works with her learners.
Good morning. Thank you, Edward. My name is Sujana Dhirnada. I'm from India. I'm actually a teacher from India, and I taught here for 27 years as well. I finally decided to retire, but then I made up my mind that before I retire, I would like to give back to the community in some form and shape. So I approached the Literacy Center and met with Edward and offered my services that I would like to be a tutor. Because I believe, and I once read, that the mind is not an empty vessel to be filled, but the fire to be ignited. And each one of us in this room has the ability to do that, to light the fire and to have the passion to teach students, any age, any color, any creed. I have met so many students from different parts of the world, and they're all here to learn because they know there's hope in America, and we have the power to give them that hope with education and training. So I feel privileged and honored to play that vital role. And I would like to invite each one of you to keep this in mind, that when the opportunity comes by to step in and say, I would like to be a tutor, it just takes one hour of your time to touch someone's lives, and they are ever so grateful to learn to read, write, and speak English fluently. Thank you.
All right. I think we got a pro. Darla, if you guys want to come into the well, we'll...
Stay. Come on.
When the librarian calls. Getting, getting good insight into what's going on over there.
We've got a few more joining.
Oh, very good.
I'm the librarian, some of my library board.
Excellent.
This proclamation is recognizing September 2019 as National Literacy Month in Tulare County, whereas the Tulare County Library celebrates 19 years of the Read to Succeed Library Literacy Program's free services. And whereas these services have succeeded and, and continue to transform the lives of adults and families in Tulare County, which we heard about. And whereas local volunteers make a real difference in the overall success of the Literacy Center by providing one-on-one tutoring for adults to improve reading and life skills. And whereas volunteers work with families in creating literacy-rich environments and others to improve their English-speaking skills. And whereas people from all areas of the county, both urban and rural, form an enthusiastic and diverse group of learners wanting to make a positive change in their lives. And whereas Read to Succeed partners with numerous county and community agencies to ensure leverage of resources and services that assist the community's efforts to address the literacy needs of the adults and families we all serve. And whereas the County of Tulare celebrates the success of the Library's Read to Succeed Literacy Program for adults and families, the county commends and publicly acknowledges the efforts of the staff, volunteer tutors, learners, and partners in current and future endeavors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors recognize September 2019 as National Literacy Month in Tulare County. Signed Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Schucklian, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend.
Mr. Chair, just to make a few comments. I want to thank Darla for coming here and making this presentation, and really want to thank the volunteers that make this possible. You know, in Tulare County, everybody saw the slide, for 70 volunteers to provide 2900 hours of service, I think that's amazing. You, you look in our rural communities, and so often, the only presence that the county has in the community may be a library. And to know that people and residents in the community can go to the library to read a book and light that fire, thank you for that, that phrase, I think that was a great way of putting it, is, is so special. But even the ability to go and get a career certificate or to complete their GED, I mean, these libraries are opening doors and worlds of opportunity for residents in our communities and for communities to lift themselves up and, and people to better themselves, to have the opportunity to do that without even leaving the confines of a small rural community, I think is very, very special. So I thank you, Darla, for the work that you do and, and your library staff to carry out this mission. And I really do appreciate the work of the volunteers that are giving of their time to help others in this community to better themselves. I think it's very special. Thanks, Darla.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll go to item three, recognizing September 21st, 2019 as Museum Day in Tulare County. Amy, I think you, you want to come on up and read this pro? I think this is very appropriate considering a later agenda item that we've got, so it's very good. This proclamation is recognizing September 21st, 2019 as Museum Day in Tulare County. Whereas the Museum Alliance of Tulare County was created to form a network of organizations that makes preserving and sharing local history a priority. And whereas each of the organizations house valuable collections that require high-quality care and encourage critical support from communities through funding, donations, patronage, and volunteers. And whereas the Museum Alliance wants to bring vital awareness of the organization and the treasures held in order to demonstrate what can be done at the local and national levels through collaboration. And whereas Museum Day is an annual celebration of boundless curiosity hosted by Smithsonian Magazine with participating museums and cultural institutions across the country to provide free entry to anyone presenting a Museum Day ticket or participating in Museum Day. And whereas the Museum Alliance of Tulare County is taking the initiative to participate in and promote Museum Day as a collaborative project for the first time in Tulare County, now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize September 21st, 2019 as Museum Day in Tulare County. We also recognize the importance of museums to our communities and the benefits of working together to preserve these valuable institutions for the future enjoyment of our residents. Signed Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Schucklian, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend.
Yes. First, thank you so much for this recognition today. I'm so honored to be colleagues with this group. There are 22 organizations that are participating, and I just want to recognize those very quickly. It's the Tulare County Museum, Woodlake Valley Cultural Museum, Tulare County Office of Education, the International Agri Center, Three Rivers Historical Society, the Two Le River Historical Society and Springville Museum, Lindsay Museum and Fire Museum, Imagine You Children's Museum, the COS Art Gallery, Tulare County Tourism, Tulare Historical Museum, Tulare County Treasures, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Arts Consortium, State Parks in Allensworth, the Exeter Historical Museum, Alta District Historical Society, the Zalid House in Porterville, Mineral King Preservation Society, the Tulare County Library and History Room, the Porterville Historical Museum and Arts Visalia are all participating members. It's a new group, and we're really excited to start collaborating and working on events together and really see what we can do for this community. We've already had so many efforts so far and planning some events, and so, again, I'm just so honored to be colleagues with this whole group.
Our next item is item four, present a proclamation recognizing Southern California Edison for its annual Hispanic Heritage Month celebration.
We just welcomed up Brian Thornburn, who's the Government Relations Manager with Southern California Edison. Hispanic Heritage Month takes place September 15 to October 15 every year as a time to recognize and celebrate the many contributions, diverse cultures, and extensive histories of the American Latino community. Since then, the month has been celebrated nationwide through festivals, as well as art shows, conferences, community gatherings, and more. And that is why it gives me great joy to present this proclamation to Southern California Edison for its ninth annual event that recognizes and honors customers and partners who are making a difference in the community. And this year's recipients are Doug Ross, Inc., doing business as Central Valley Asphalt out of Lindsay, Vallarta Food Enterprises, and the Visalia Emergency Aid Council. And with that, I will present this proclamation, recognizing the month of September 15 to October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month in Tulare County. Whereas, to honor the achievements of Hispanic Americans, Hispanic Heritage Week was signed into law by President London B. Johnson in 1968. This commemorative week was expanded by legislation signed into law in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan, making it Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas September 15th was selected as a starting point of the celebration because of it being the anniversary of independence for five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, and Honduras. September is a significant month for other Latin American countries such as Mexico, Chile, and Belize, who also celebrate their independence in the month of September. And whereas the United States of America draws its strength from the contributions of all its people, and Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the vibrant traditions of faith, family, hard work, and patriotism that Hispanic Americans bring to our community. And whereas during this month, we honor the 1.2 million Hispanic Americans who have answered the call to serve in our armed forces, demonstrating remarkable loyalty, bravery, and dedication to duty. And whereas we recognize Southern California Edison for their annual celebration that recognizes the many contributions of the Hispanic community in the Central Valley and celebrates business and community partners that advance the efforts of the Hispanic American citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do here proclaim the month of September 15 through October 15, 2019 as Hispanic Heritage Month in Tulare County, and calls upon all citizens to celebrate and honor the many contributions to our community made by Hispanic Americans. Signed Kyler Crocker, Chairman, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Schucklian, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend.
If I may, thank you Supervisor Valero and Board members. On behalf of Southern California Edison, we want to express our continuing thanks to the county for your steadfast support and partnership on all of our projects. As Supervisor Valero mentioned, this is our ninth annual event, and it's a great celebration of the diversity in our region, so we encourage all of you to join us on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. And since we have you here today, Brian, I'll just give you guys some more kudos outside of the great work in the community you do. Really appreciate the updates when there was a potential power safety, public safety power shut off a couple of weeks ago. It was very helpful for our local communities, and glad we didn't have to do that.
Thank you. Actually, the public comments.
Oh, beautiful. Which moves us to item five, public comments. So you get back up, and since you've already shared your interest in it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning again, Board members and staff and the public. Just wanted to provide a brief update. Obviously, the number one priority right now for Southern California Edison is wildfire mitigation, and we have a wildfire mitigation plan that addresses a number of aspects on that front. I just wanted to touch on a few of them this morning, just to provide you an update. We're reinforcing our electrical grid with new technologies that help reduce wildfire risks. These include installing insulated wires that lower the chance of faults or short circuits that could create sparks when those wires come into contacts with birds or other animals, vegetation, or debris. As a matter of fact, at Supervisor Townsend's recent meeting in Camp Nelson, we passed around an example of that insulated wire, which gave the public a better understanding as to how we're safeguarding our system. We're also installing composite poles, which are stronger and more resilient than wood poles. We're also placing remote controlled automatic equipment on our circuits that can react more quickly to minimize fire risks. We're also inspecting all of our overhead power lines and equipment in high-risk fire areas to identify and remediate problems. And so if you see helicopters or other aerial inspections going on, that's, that's what we're doing in terms of, on that front, in terms of inspections. From a situational awareness standpoint, we're taking advantage of technology more than ever. That includes installing more weather stations and high-definition cameras in high-risk fire areas. That increases our ability to anticipate weather conditions and identify and proactively address any equipment issues. We also continue with an active vegetation management program where we're outline clearing our equipment from any vegetation or bushes, again, to minimize any potential fire hazards that may be posed by vegetation or trees. Lastly, we do have our public safety power shut off program, and this is a situation where when the weather conditions are such that the risk becomes extreme for potential fire, and that's a combination of wind, temperature, low humidity, then we will proactively go in and de-energize circuits in those high-risk fire areas. And as Chairman Crocker alluded to, a couple of weeks ago, we did have a couple circuits in the county that were on the watch list. Fortunately, didn't have to get to the point of actually turning the power off, but we have a process in place where we want to give advance notice to the county and to potentially impacted customers that, hey, we're looking at this, so be prepared. As a matter of fact, over in Mono and Inyo right now, we do have a public safety power shut off incident that's been occurring because of the extreme winds and other weather over there. Fortunately, initially, that event impacted about 14,000 customers over on the eastern Sierra. About 10,000 of those customers have already been restored. But again, it just points up that when we have hazardous conditions, we have to act to minimize the fire risk. So it's basically what's going on at Edison on the wildfire front. So appreciate the opportunity to update you all.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chair, I know normally, we don't normally respond to public comments, but I do appreciate the proactive approach, especially the text messages that come letting me know that there's a public safety power shut off at 11 o'clock at night in Mono County or...
a public safety power shut off at 11 o'clock at night in Mono County, or this weekend there was some late message about LA County. So, in case I happen to be traveling in other areas of the state, I'm glad that when I'm sleeping here in Tulare County, I know what's going on in other places. It's great.
Very good. Thank you. I know we have further requests for public comments by our Health and Human Services Director, Mr. Lutz.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Member 4. Ms. Peterson, sorry. Thank you. I wanted to use this time, sorry, getting used to that different microphone, wanted to use this time to advise the board and also members of the public about a recent death due to or associated with vaping use. It occurred yesterday, and we put out the press release yesterday and understandably have gotten quite a bit of public attention. That makes us one of the two counties in California to have experienced a death related to this, what is a really national epidemic or incident right now where there's a sharp increase in the number of respiratory, acute respiratory illness associated with the use of vaping products, whether it be tobacco or cannabis-related. The, really from the public health perspective, we just want to remind the public in general of the still unknown effects long-term of vaping use, certainly if someone does choose to use a vape, to only buy through reputable dealers and not make your own at home. Again, the acute respiratory illness, although not entirely confined to those types of products, certainly is more prevalent there. Again, just public service announcement and advice to the board on what's going on.
Appreciate that. That's very timely and hopefully we can figure out a little bit more about the ramifications of use with vaping, so, thank you. Any other public comments?
Good morning, Chairman Crocker, Members of the Board, CAO, and County Council. I'm Rhonda Schustrom, Human Resources Director, and I'm here to invite you to our 10th Annual Health Fair, County Health Fair next week, which we put on for our county employees. And we generally have about 1,200 to 1,300 of our employees attend. They are given time off to attend that during their regular work hours. We will have several demonstrations, as well as, you know, we have the informational booths from our health vendors. We also do flu shots through the county health program that will kick off their flu shot season. And we will be promoting our new program, 98.6, as well as giving information about our health rates. This is the kickoff for our open enrollment period that will last through October, and our employees come in and register, sign up for their services for the health plan year starting January 2020. We also will have a new demonstration from the McDermott House, which is an obstacle course that is being brought this year. And of course, we will have our mammogram bus and also our blood drive, the blood drive bus there, and so I just invite you to come out and participate. And we will, of course, have our Sheriff K-9 demonstration and an appearance by fortune, the district attorney victim abuse dog that they use with the children in the courts. So we'd like to see everybody come out and participate. Thank you.
And you're going to take lots of pictures of folks going through the obstacle course.
We will.
Beautiful.
And you could come out and demonstrate it, Chairman.
Unfortunately, we're going to be at a conference.
We will be out of town, unfortunately. I was going to mention that, too. Will there be pet adoptions this year?
There will be pet adoptions, and we will also be doing a survey on, to our employees, on pets in the workplace. So we will be giving out a survey to determine.
And pooches in the pool?
Interest. No, we will, no pooches in the pool yet.
Just in Mill Creek.
Find the pool.
That's rad. One other serious question, is that the only time this year that the mammogram bus will be here, is on the Health Fair Day? Because it usually comes later.
No, we will be, we will be having them go, the mammogram bus go to other sites, and our employees can be registering for that. That occurs, I want to say, later in October and into potentially November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other public comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Ms. County Council, and Dr. CAO. My name is Chaz Felix, Homeless Initiatives Program Coordinator at Health and Human Services. I wanted to share some really exciting news with you. Recently, we entered the CSAC Challenge Awards competition, and we were one of only three other suburban counties in the Health and Human Services Agency category to receive a merit award, a merit award for initiative called Pool for Homeless Initiatives Locally, or Phil for short. Phil was co-developed with our great partners at the Kings Tulare Homeless Alliance and provides for a one-stop-shop platform for applying a wide ranging, applying for a wide range of homeless funding. Previously, to fund homeless programs, local stakeholders would have to navigate and apply through several different types of individual funding sources, with project applications that are often narrow in focus, really making it challenging to pencil out projects. With Phil, applicants can go to one application and easily layer different funding sources for a single project, thereby promoting more efficient and comprehensive efforts and an increase in the overall impact of local homeless projects. A big part of my job is to figure out ways to leverage existing agency resources for greater collective impact, and Phil is a great example of that. So to make things a little bit more concrete, a bridge housing project in Visalia and one in Porterville, we're able to use Phil to access over $300,000 of mental health grant, mental health grant funding literally needed to make these projects possible. So we are definitely happy to report that the county really is doing a lot of tremendous innovative things to address homelessness, and we are certainly humbled the state is recognizing our progress. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move into our consent calendar, Items 6 through 33. Are there any items that are wishing to be pulled for separate consideration or comment by members of the board or public? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Chairman.
Move by Supervisor Valero, you want to hit your button, too? And the second by Supervisor Shucklian. Easy there, Madam Clerk. Ah, quick trigger. I don't believe it was 2-0, I didn't even get to vote.
I think we blinked.
You, I don't know, Mal, you're in charge. Michelle, would you, would you have done that? I mean, I don't know. All right, first, we have motion by Valero, second by Shucklian, now let's cast.
Do it quick.
Yeah, exactly. Got to be quick. All right, 5-0, very good, all right. Touch and go. And all the departments breathe a sigh of relief. Exactly. All right, we'll take up Item 34, Receive a Presentation from the General Services Agency Regarding the Tulare County Museum Strategic Business Plan. You were clapping before the presentation started?
Yeah. Oh.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson. I'm Brooke Sis, General Services Agency Assistant Director, and I'm here today with Amy King, the museum curator, and Kevin Caskey, President of the Museum Board. And we're here today to update you on many of the exciting things happening at the Tulare County Museum. We will be presenting a strategic plan, which GSA staff have been working on over the last year in collaboration with the Museum Board and Historical Society. This is in response to the changing size and scope of the museum to ensure it remains relevant and effective. Some of the outcomes of our efforts have already been presented this year. This includes a new building to house antique agricultural equipment that is being restored by students at local high schools. And funding for this project was approved in the budget last week and will be supplemented by a $100,000 donation from the Historical Society. We are beginning the design phase and expect it to be completed this year, this fiscal year. Additionally, finishing the second floor of the Ag Museum was included in the capital improvement plan for funding in future years. Now I'm going to turn it over to Amy King, who will give a brief introduction and discuss the strategic plan's purpose.
Thank you so much. There are some exciting times ahead, and I'm so glad to be here to share that with you today. As you know, we have spent over 70 years housing our history in the Tulare County Museum, and expansion is inevitable, and so sustainability has never been more important to discuss than now. Our museum has worked to gain many community partners, many you saw just recently with the Museum Alliance that was newly created. The Tulare County Historical Society has been our longest-standing supporting partner, and they've always been very involved. This strategic plan is a proposal of how we are going to facilitate our ideas going forward. This plan is going to work as a guiding document that will ensure our strategic goals work toward our vision. The mission of the Tulare County Museum is to protect, preserve, and promote a shared understanding of Tulare County's past and its place in the future by providing the community with innovative, diverse, and engaging exhibits and events. The projects that we're going to be focusing on are our agricultural equipment restoration project, we've been working on that for a few years already and hopefully looking to complete that soon. We've been working to build a continuous restoration project program where we work with the Historical Society to determine which structures have priority over others. We've been hosting events to encourage diverse patronage. We are looking to complete the second floor of the History of Farm Labor and Agriculture Museum, so that we have more space to provide displays and resources for the community. We are going to be seeking accreditation through the American Alliance of Museums and in the future hoping to establish a museum entrance fee. Several of these projects are collaborations with the Tulare County Historical Society, and I can't say enough about how important they are and how helpful that they've been and continue to be, especially with our restoration projects. So with that said, I want to turn it over to Kevin Caskey, who's a past president and current member of the Tulare County Historical Society, and also the President of the Tulare County Museum Board.
You look pretty good, Kevin.
Thank you very much, Amy. I do, don't I? I did this on special. I don't have my three-piece suit on, however, that I always wore when I was in business. Okay. Now, the museum's been there for 70 years, and I've been here 79. That's amazing, isn't it? Not quite 79. Being a past president of the Historical Society, it's really important to me that we support the museum, and I'd like to talk a little bit about that. We put together the mission and implemented it through projects. The Museum Board consists of three representatives from the Tulare County Historical Society, Joanne Ledbetter, Darla Wegner, our county librarian, Neil Pilligard, the Parks Administrator, and Amy King, of course, Ann Johnson, who's new to our board of the museum, and myself. There's a big advantage in having three representatives on the board from the Historical Society in that we have created a strong partnership with that organization through a common mission. Their support in preserving our history has been invaluable. As stewards of history, one of our major duties is to determine the acceptance of proposed donations into the collection. The Museum Board assists in creating the collection management policy that is now in place and guides us in making decisions regarding the collection. The Board also frequently assesses the current collection needs and develops ideas to address those. Along with the mission, the values are also a driving force in our decision-making. Through our programming, projects, and events, we strive to be resourceful, inclusive, collaborative, friendly, and accessible. These values are important in making the museum a community center where visitors can engage with our local history in a meaningful way. Once again, thank you. I, I'm having a lot of fun on the Museum Board. It's, it's really a great deal. And I never was a historian when I was growing up, took history classes, of course, but one day Joe Doctor called me and said, hey, we want you on the museum, on the Tulare County Historical Society Board of Directors, and that's really how I got started, from people in the past who have pushed me along and taught me a lot about the history of Tulare County. Thank you.
And of course, Darla Wegner is on our board, and she's here today, too.
Didn't I mention her?
I know. It's like Darla, Darla, Darla.
At this time, I want to go through each of our visions and the strategic goals that we're going to be doing to make those happen. We do get a lot of third and fourth graders that are studying our local Native American tribes, and we are looking to expand our programming to align with other grade levels. One way that we did that last year was through our Veterans Day event and our World War I project. It was, started out as a special event where we provided resources for teachers and they were able to do lessons with their students, but it's become an annual event, so we're going to be doing that each year. A technology update that we'll be working on in the near future is creating an audio tour for the museum that our visitors can download onto their phones and go around, and they will be able to do a self-guided tour that way. Our cultural displays are still a large part of our programming and exhibits. Currently, we have our Korean exhibit on display, and we're working to put together a westward settlers exhibit that are going to be the original pioneers of Tulare County, and that's going to be opening early next year. And so it is so important for us to see our community reflected in the, in the museum. We're already collaborating on exhibits and events and looking for even more opportunities to do that. Currently, the museum loaned out an exhibit on the Visalia Electric Railroad to the visitor's center at Lake Kaweah. We also had a presence at the Tulare County Fair that just happened, and we're looking forward to May of next year where the Museum Alliance is going to work together to create a sort of mini-museum in the lobby of the Tulare County Office of Education when they have their night at the 21st Century Museum. We're trying some new events. We just recently had a film screening of a documentary that's going to air later this month on migrant farm workers. We had a book talk from a local author. We also did Paint Night, and then of course, our annual events, which are the Main Street Jamboree, our fundraiser, and then now the Veterans Day event is going to be an annual one. I regularly speak with Kiwanis Clubs and Rotary Clubs and our veterans groups just to make sure that they're aware of the museum, of what we're doing, and how they can be involved. And our annual fundraiser has been dedicated to specific restoration projects each year. We've so far been able to restore our Southern Pacific caboose that was used on the Visalia Electric Railroad, our Masonic facade, our Main Street Gallery, and our Ag Equipment Project is our current one. I am lucky enough to be able to attend a conference each year, usually put on by the American Alliance of Museums or the California Association of Museums. It offers great networking opportunities and just sharing ideas. I've gotten so many great ideas and how to implement those into museums, because a lot of museums do struggle with the same problems of having, you know, not a whole lot of money or small staffing, and there are ways that you can still be present in the community, so I'm thankful for those opportunities. In working towards applying for accreditation through the American Alliance of Museums, they do require some core documents, and we've been working to put those in place. We do have our mission statement, which I read earlier. We'll be working on an institutional code of ethics. We have our strategic institutional plan that we're presenting right now. Just after this meeting, I'm going to be going to another meeting to meet about our disaster preparedness and emergency response plan, which is so important because a lot of our museums have these collections. It's important to know where they are and what to do in case there's a fire or something like that, so that'll be so important that we put that together and we can share with our Museum Alliance, and we'll all have that in place. And then our collections management policy, which we put together a couple of years ago. We have a very large We have a very large collection, and we often rotate that to maintain our display spaces, and we also keep our collections safe. We have three volunteers that help the museum on a regular basis, and I'm working on a shared volunteer program through the Museum Alliance of Tulare County. We're hoping that we can, as a group, create a group of volunteers that we can all share that maybe can help at events or certain things that are happening at all the museums. As we expand, we'll have more to offer our volunteers in the ways of previews of new exhibits, free entrance or membership, things like that. The project that is going to give us the largest assistance is the new building for our restored ag equipment and also the building out of the upstairs of the History of Farm Labor and Agriculture Museum. We'll have more space to display our collections safely for our public to access. There are many projects that require one-time funding, such as upgrading our security system and soliciting artwork for the entrance of the museum, and there are also some projects that will require ongoing funding, such as matching funds for our restoration projects. Our first key initiative is our agriculture equipment restoration project. We gave a presentation on this not long ago. We've been working on expanding this project over the past few years. We have over a hundred and eighty pieces in that collection that tell the story of farming in our area. We already had the participation of nine local high schools this past school year, and we just met with other high schools two weeks ago to solicit more participation for that. By connecting the students to history through this project, we're able to provide a sense of ownership for them displaying their work in the museum, and it's also helped to involve high school-age students in the museum, which has been a goal for us. The second key initiative is our continuous restoration program, and this is essential to keep our museum safely operating. We have completed restoration projects on the clock tower, the caboose, the Masonic facade, the Main Street Gallery, and our agriculture equipment. We're looking at our blacksmith shop next, and we already have volunteers interested in providing demonstrations when we have that restored. Our volunteers, Bob Gribb and Stan Hawkins, they have done some great work for us on some of the structures that are in the Pioneer Village, such as the Emken House, the Surprise School, the Oak Fort, the Log Cabin, the Windmill, and they're currently working on the jail. While these repairs were much needed on the smaller structures, there will be needs in the future as well to keep those maintained. Each year, we hold a cultural exhibit opening reception, our Main Street Jamboree, and our annual fundraiser. This year, our fundraiser is going to be on Sunday, October 6th, from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. Please let me know if you're interested. I can tell you how to attend. Some new events that we have hosted are Paint Night, the book talk for a local author and his book Murder in Visalia. This year, we had a Women's History Month tea and talk, also the documentary film screening on migrant farm workers, and the Veterans Day event, which is now going to be an annual event. Some future events that we are looking at are an evening with dueling pianos, historical lectures, and a History Day red carpet event. It's going to be on February 20th. I don't know if you're involved in History Day with the Office of Education, but they do that each year. One of the sections of that is students are able to make documentaries as their project, and so I'm working with them to allow those students that are moving on to the state level, they're going to do kind of a red carpet event at our theater so they can come and see their documentary in the theater with their friends and family, so I'm excited about that one. Our fourth key initiative is the completion of our History of Farm Labor and Agriculture Museum. There is seven thousand square feet of expansion space that could be used for display space, storage. We could offer meeting space to other community members and a research center for people that would be able to look through archives or photos if they're doing research. The newest building here that you see offers climate control, proper lighting, and preservation requirements needed to secure our significant collection. Earlier, we talked about the core documents for accreditation, and I wanted to speak to the core standards. This comes straight from the American Alliance of Museums. I just wanted to read a few points, key points for each of the topics. They require that you have public trust and accountability. This means that the museum is a good steward of its resources held in the public trust. The museum identifies the communities it serves and makes appropriate decisions in how it serves them, being a good neighbor, so working well with other community members, and that the museum strives to be inclusive and offers opportunities for diverse participation, and that education is placed at the center of our role. So we're doing all of that. The next part, mission and planning, this means that our museum has a clear understanding of its mission and communicates why it exists and who benefits as a result of its efforts, and that the museum engages in ongoing and reflective institutional planning that includes involvement of its audiences and community, and that's really why we're working to make the museum a community center. Leadership and organizational structure means that the governance, staff, and volunteer structures and processes effectively advance the museum's mission, so we're always working towards that. Collection stewardship means that the museum owns exhibits or uses collections that are appropriate to its mission. The museum strategically plans for the use and development of its collections, and as guided by its mission, the museum provides public access to its collections while ensuring their preservation. Education and interpretation means that the museum understands the characteristics and needs of its existing and potential audiences and uses this understanding to inform its interpretation. The museum uses techniques, technologies, and methods appropriate to its educational goals, content, audiences, and resources, and that the museum presents accurate and appropriate content for each of its audiences. Financial stability means that the museum legally, ethically, and responsibly acquires, manages, and allocates its financial resources in a way that advances its mission, and that the museum operates in a fiscally responsible manner that promotes its long-term sustainability. And finally, the facilities and risk management means that the museum allocates its space and uses its facilities to meet the needs of the collections, audience, and staff. The museum has appropriate measures to ensure the safety and security of people, its collections, and/or objects in the facilities it owns or uses. The museum has an effective program for care and long-term maintenance of its facilities, and the museum is clean and well-maintained and provides for the visitors' needs. And our final key initiative to establish a museum entrance fee is for the future. We're currently doing research on that. The museum does not charge an entrance fee, but generates revenue from school groups that reserve a tour and also one dollar from each car that enters the park, which is only charged three days a week. We have reached out to teachers that bring their students each year to just kind of ask them if charging a fee that's a little bit higher would be a problem for them. They've all said how important the museum is to their students and their education and that they would continue to bring them even if they were charged a little bit more. And so we're providing a service, and so they understood that and still recognize the importance of the museum. In having an entrance fee, we would have the ability to offer membership and other ways for people to be involved in the museum and feel invested in that museum. And so just placing a, placing a quality of experience is what we're looking for, not really to make a ton of money, but we do want to give a quality experience to those visitors and feel that that would be respectable. Okay, so in the last few years, the museum has continued to expand its presence in the community, and I really like to commend Ms. King for the wonderful job that she's done, really just bringing the museum to the next level. And she's proven her ability to be innovative and resourceful with limited funding. As such, we're requesting the allocation of an additional eighty-two thousand dollars to the museum's budget this year. And this additional funding would go a long way toward furthering the plan's strategic goals. It includes adding one extra help employee to catalog the museum's artifacts, which is required to achieve that accreditation, one extra help employee to assist with display rotation and routine upkeep, matching funds for restoration projects that are raised by the Historical Society, and funds to promote and host museum activities and events. And we plan to return in April of 2020 with the formal request and public hearing to adjust fees for the following fiscal year. I would also like to recognize our supervising analyst at GSA, Katrina Fernandez, for the great job that she did helping to write the strategic plan. So that being said, we respectfully request approval of the strategic plan, an additional eighty-two thousand dollar budget allocation, and corresponding on 308. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments for members of the board?
I have a few comments.
Sure.
First of all, Kevin.
Turn your mic on.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't have to get up. I was just going to say thank you, and I want to thank again whoever it was that encouraged you to be a member of the Historical Society.
Joe Doctor.
Well, Joe Doctor, thank you because you have been a great force within the Historical Society, so thank you.
Could not say no to him.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely. But I'd like to make one other point. I think we're truly blessed that we have Amy King.
I was getting there.
Good. She's a jewel.
Yes.
Okay.
It's kind of funny. As we get older, at least for me, history becomes more and more fascinating. So I think the opportunity to open this up to more, the schoolchildren, but even outside of Tulare County, the history of agricultural in general. You know, I don't know, Mike, if we have this on our tourism information and all that, but I think it's a great opportunity. I was up at four o'clock this morning going over my mind, and you actually said what I was thinking only with more technology. I remember when I was a kid, a long time ago, Storyland at Roding Park. They had a little key, and you would go and put the key in and turn the thing, and it would give a little story about the big bad wolf. So I was thinking that would be something cool that would have at the museum. Obviously, the little cellphone thing is much more current, yes. So with that, now, Amy, yeah, you have, to say you've kicked it up a notch is minimal. You have just been a great asset for the community, for the museum, and I'm very excited about what you have in store, and I'll support you a hundred percent. You bet.
Thank you. Supervisor Valero?
First, I'd like, okay. First, I'd like to say that it's a gem of a place for someone that didn't know it existed. First, I want to thank John Hess and Brooke Sisk for taking me on a tour once I got elected, and so that was one of the first stops that they took me to go and explore and see. So again, thank you for the opportunity and the history that we have here in Tulare County. Just a few quick questions. One, with regards to schools and programming, so are there like certain packages that you provide to the schools? Sort of like speakers, tour, video with the theater, lunch or breakfast? Do you have certain packages that then schools can kind of get at so that way they can take their students to?
We do, and they can access that on the website. Currently, since we mainly get third and fourth grade, that's kind of what we have. We can do a presentation with them on the baskets. They get to use the mortars and pestles. Then we have a video that was created in partnership with the Office of Education, and there's a reenactment, and it goes into further detail there. And we do have a scavenger hunt that we email to all the teachers that the kids can do throughout. I would like to expand the programming. It's hard when there's two and a half people that work there, though. So we don't want to overextend. We get, we're just solidly booked in May, and we get over five thousand schoolkids each year. And so, again, that's why we're kind of asking for that support so that we can't, we want to do those things in a realistic manner. So once we have the resources, we'll definitely be able to expand that and offer other things.
Okay. And then I know you had mentioned, which you'll be coming back to later on, budget adjustments, but I had a quick question on the museum fee, which will be separate from the park fee, correct? And so currently, individuals can just go into the park, pay the park fee, and then visit the museum for free. Do you know, and again, this is more long-term, but will the museum fee be included in the entrance to the park fee? Or will that be separate, a standalone, at the museum itself? How would that work?
So we haven't fully discussed logistics of how that would work. It will depend on staffing, if we have somebody to collect the fee in the museum or whether we have them say that they would like to also attend the museum and pay the fee at the gate booth. So we're kind of tossing that around, but we'll work that out later on when we get closer to implementation.
Yeah, and like I said, for me, growing up, it's said that our school didn't take us to the museum because, as I mentioned when I recently visited, it's just a gem in our community. And so again, thank you for the work and look forward to publicizing this more throughout our county, but also like Supervisor Shuckley said, outside of our county, because we do have a rich history. So thank you.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and I just want to echo a couple of things that my colleagues have said and just emphasize that the museum and the museums that are out there really do add, you know, a layer. They really enhance the living in this, in the county. And as we, again, as we toured DC, got a chance to look at some of the museums, but it was on everybody's mind, you know, I mean, there's a bunch of them there. But it was on everybody's mind. Everybody talked about which one was their favorite and what one they wanted to go to next. And so to have these, you know, Springville was mentioned up there, and I don't know, all the volunteers up there have been to that one several times, and it just gives you a sense of place. You know, it kind of helps the ground in the community. And one of the things we're, you know, we're always talking about is how people are raised here. They take off to go to school and never come back, you know, years down the road. I think that having that tie to our past and to how we came to be where we are now in, you know, in the form of these museums is a great way to inform the kids growing up, you know, why they want to continue to be a part. And I think it will help with the retention of those people here as well. So really supportive of that. Thank you for all of your work and for all the volunteers that are out there, because I know there's a bunch of them that are out there. So thanks very much.
Supervisor Shuckley, did you have?
Yeah, just again, touching on the fee. I know a lot of people already say, oh, wow, it's cost six bucks to get into the park, and my spiel is, well, you know, the museum is free when you do pay that entrance. So, and I know it's only three days a week that you have to pay, so I have a little angst with that, but not a lot. Is Moonee's Grove the only park we pay to get into, or is Cutler also, and Bolch?
Cutler, Bolch, and Bartlett.
Bartlett, okay. Okay, so just keep that in mind as you're formulating the payment plan and the entrance fees and all of that. And I know it's per carload that that fee is also, but then once now there'll be, you know, four or five more dollars to get into the museum.
We got Supervisor Vanderpoel first.
Good job, Mr. Chairman. You paid attention to the screen here, Mr. Valero. You got to make sure you speak in order.
Vanderpoel waited his turn.
Great presentation. It's wonderful to hear about the museum. And really, I wanted to compliment you, Amy, on your effort to accredit the museum. I think that is so important. You know, it's, oh, we have this museum in our county. Well, is it an accredited museum? To know that you've attained that level and it's something that garners a respect in and of itself, I think is really commendable, so thank you for doing that. Clearly, you have a librarian on your board when you, your language in request number three is approve an adjustment to the museum budget instead of an increase. Okay. It's semantics, word choice. I'm kidding. But very happy to work to approve this, and this is going to improve the museum. It's more than just the museum facility. It's the Pioneer Village. It's all of the aspects of the history that you preserve at Moonee's Grove that really do add to the value and to the preservation of history in the county. I think that with these additional employees, with the additional efforts, you're going to continue to grow and improve the museum and get more and more attendance and attention from the community. So very supportive, and if there's, you know, I encourage you just to continue to be innovative, to think outside the box and think how we can continue to attract more, to enjoy the museum so that they do feel rooted in the county and appreciate the past because if we forget our past, it's very difficult to navigate towards the future. So thank you very much, Amy, and really. So, thank you very much, Amy, and really excited for this, to see where this ends up going.
Very good. Supervisor Valero?
So, going along
It was on.
All right. So, going along with what Amy had said about the consternation of, again, increasing fees potentially, but I also think that it goes to the way we market and the way we brand. So, people entering the park can get a brochure and say, look, this is another added to your fee, and we encourage you to highly utilize that. So, it's on you if you don't, but you've already paid the fee, and look at the beautiful buildings that we do have that talk about our history. So, again, the branding, the marketing will also come into play as you begin to re-envision and imagine what that could be.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think it is just so important to place a value on that experience for people, so, you know, in the research, that's something that I've seen, is where, you know, the people that pay to enter museums will spend longer at the museum and appreciate it and be invested, rather than if you're, if you don't and you just come and go. So, that's kind of the main thing, and we do want to be recognized, not only in the community, but also further, like Supervisor Vanderpoel was saying. So, that would help us to expand our reach.
I just want to thank staff for bringing this forward. I think we had a discussion about having some type of strategic plan about a year ago, and so, this is a fantastic document, really lays out where the museum's going, and as well as concrete ways to achieve that. I think that's really important. A lot of times, there's strategic plans that, you know, have a lot of great verbiage, but it doesn't really show a pathway to how to achieve that. So, I appreciate that. The alliance, I think, is also great. We, you know, being able to coordinate staffing is difficult, not only for our museum, but for all the other museums in our county, and being able to share resources, share the collections that each and everyone has, I think just enhances everyone's overall experience. And so, I really appreciate that. The fee as proposed in the, in the staff report is only a dollar per person, so I think that's important to note. We're not talking about a large increase, as well as potentially if there are smaller school groups, and it might actually be cheaper for the, for smaller school groups as, than what currently they're charged. So, that might actually be beneficial on a per-person basis rather than the group. You know, I, from a visionary standpoint, and I think it was previous boards, we're very visionary as far as creating the new addition in the Ag and Farm Labor Museum. I think that many times, local governments aren't necessarily considered in the museum business, but when we, when we look at historically what's happened, I mean, LA County has phenomenal museums in Exposition Park, San Francisco has great museums in Golden Gate Park, San Diego in Balboa, we're none of those, right, as far as size or scope? And I don't know that we ever will be, but I think it's important to have a vision as far as what can we be, and, you know, working towards that and really being a hub. I mean, we've, we've got a, our region has a lot of small, smaller museums, and I think we have an opportunity to, with this strategic plan, work towards being the best regional museum in the Southern San Joaquin Valley. I don't think that that's out of the realm of possibility. Granted, that's going to take a commitment on this board's part in order to achieve that, but I think that those are, that's a realistic, longer-term goal, to be able to be a shining star for education, for cultural purposes in our region, because there is a vacuum here. But I really appreciate it, and history's so important, fifth-generation Tulare Countyan, it's important to me to be able to continue to preserve this, so thank you for all your efforts.
With that, is there any public comments? Oh, it's Darla Day.
Since you guys are making it about me today, no, actually, it should be about Amy. She, you guys echoed a lot of what I wanted to say, and I've seen her grow and do amazing things in the short time I've been here. When we went to DC to her first museum convention, it was inspiring to see her just light up at everything we did together, and I invited her along, and, you know, Neil supported that, and I was so proud of her, even though the joke going along after a while, they were like, is this your daughter? So, but I really wanted to give her some good news as well, and you guys, as well, we applied for a, to be part of a consortium that is going to be able to do memory labs, which is offering services to our public to come in and digitize possibly their photos, their videos, and things not only for themselves, but to add to our collections, and we got it. And Amy is going to partner with us to do that, so I wanted to give her that good news I just found out just minutes ago. So, she's really brought together partnerships, she put the team together that you guys dedicated this morning about Museum Day, and that was one of my goals, and she took it on and did it. And so, I'm really so proud that she sees a bigger vision for our museum. And being a big history buff from way back, I just respect so much she does, and we have such a great team with our board. So, thank you for supporting us today.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion?
Motion approval?
Motion by Supervisor Shuckley, and a second by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes. And the motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll go on to item 35, request from the Resource Management Agency to certify mitigated negative deck for Mineral King Bridge project.
Is Donna who this is?
Yeah, I think she is. This is a historic, this is a historical bridge, so, you know.
Good morning, Chairman Crocker, members of the board, CEO and council. My name is Jason Vivian, I'm an engineer, engineer four with Army Public Works. Before I get started, I just wanted to quickly introduce a couple of the key team members that I work with. If you guys could raise your hands, Monica Mona, Carlos Gonzalez, these guys have been helping me with our bridge program. Right now, we have about 15 active bridge projects, including our Mineral King Bridge, about 350 bridges throughout the county that are over 20 feet long and Severnmore that are under 20 feet long, that we're currently working on developing a bridge preventive maintenance plan for. Today, I'm going to be talking about our historic Oak Grove or Mineral King Bridge project. And this bridge project is located on Mineral King over the east fork of the Quea River and is situated approximately six and a half miles east of State Route 198 and the community of Three Rivers. The existing bridge was originally constructed in 1923, and due to natural deterioration over the years, it qualified for replacement or rehabilitation funding. I'd like to note that the money we received to work on this project is 100% federally funded, meaning that we do not have any local Measure R tax dollars being contributed to this project. This crossing primarily serves recreational and forestry vehicles moving in and out of Mineral King Valley, and is listed on the National Historic Register, or sorry, the National Register of Historical Places based on the method of bridge design and construction implemented. There aren't too many open spandrel concrete arch bridges left in the state, and Tulare County is one of the few lucky counties to have such a beautiful structure in their bridge inventory. So, one of the key initial tasks that we started out with when we started this project was to develop a project scoping study. Our design team looked at actually nine different bridge alternatives initially, and we were able to narrow it down in conjunction with our partners over at Caltrans to three total alternatives. So, the three that you're seeing here on the top of the screen is the rehabilitation alternative, alternative one. Alternative two on the bottom left is a brand-new concrete box girder bridge on the upstream side of the existing bridge, and then we were going to leave the existing bridge in place to serve as a pedestrian crossing. And then, alternative three on the bottom right-hand corner of the slide here is a sort of hybrid rehab replacement bridge, where we would have taken a brand-new bridge crossing the stream or crossing Quea River, and incorporated some of those architectural components into it. So, after working with Caltrans, we concluded that three, of the three feasible alternatives, only one alternative, which was alternative one, the rehabilitation retrofit alternative, resulted in no effect under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act under NEPA. The State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO, also concurred with the finding of no effect, and the county was therefore required to proceed with the rehabilitation alternative. In addition to replacing all deficient elements, the project will also address the substandard bridge railing by replacing it with a crash-worthy rail, and when complete, all rehabilitation components will match the look and feel of the existing bridge. The bridge rehab will remove the speed posting for legal loads and allow the new bridge to handle even larger and heavier permit-level loads. The funding source requires that the rehab efforts address all deficiencies, and as a result, the newly rehabilitated bridge will meet current engineering and environmental standards while also preserving the national, the historical nature of the bridge. So, right now, we are currently in the preliminary engineering phase of the project, with SEQA completed, hopefully today will be complete with the environmental phase entirely. And as I mentioned before, we did have a finding of effect, which was completed in consultation with Caltrans, which concluded that only alternative one, the rehab alternative, was resulting, resulted in no effect to the historical significance and nature of the bridge. A few major project milestones, as I mentioned before, SHPO concurred on our finding of no effect, and NEPA clearance was received last year in August of 2018. Coming up, we're going to be doing some additional materials testing that's scheduled for this fall, where we are going to be confirming some of the rehab measures that are proposed to ensure that the design can move forward and we don't run into any challenges when we get into construction. The final design and right-of-way, that will start shortly after that materials testing is performed, and right now, we're anticipating construction will start in the fall of 2021. And as it currently stands, it's, there's about $9 million budgeted for both construction and construction engineering. With that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, appreciate this. This is, this is very good, something that's needed for the Mineral King folks that still have cabins in there, it's a fabulous part of Sequoia National Park. Is you or maybe other staff could give an update on what the progress is on the county's portion of reconstructing Mineral King Road? Reed, maybe?
So, I know I spoke with the Parks Service. This was probably a year ago, I think you mentioned it last time, Chairman. And at that time, I reached out to them, I know they were talking about pushing their phase of, their portion of the road into construction in the next couple of years. I haven't heard anything from them recently, but I know you had mentioned we need to make sure we coordinate our efforts with theirs.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, just because of the location of this, it's fairly remote, only one access in and out of Silver City and Mineral King, that this coordination is really key. The National Park Service is planning on rehabbing their portion of Mineral King Road, and they've also offered to help support getting federal grants for us to rehabilitate our portion of that. And so, you know, this project, rehabilitating the bridge, as well as their part of the road and possibly our part, I think is, really make a much safer experience for individuals visiting that part, portion of the park.
Definitely.
Any other comments by board members, questions, members of the public? Seeing none, entertain a motion? Move by Supervisor Townsend? Second by Supervisor Valero. Please cast your votes. And the motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are now on to item 36. Board members may make a referral to staff to have staff place a matter of business on future agenda. Is there any items that the board would like to place?
Yes.
Supervisor Valero?
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to revisit the PACE program regarding solar lending property taxes, an item brought forward to the previous Board of Supervisors. I'd like to see if we can get a report on this, either the study session or recommended item on a board agenda. I bring this up because Viseya City Council recently had this item on its agenda as well. So, if that is something we can do, I'd greatly appreciate that.
Very good. Any other items? Seeing none. Madam Counselor, do we have need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Items A through F will be heard in closed session, but I do not expect any announcements out.
Very good. We have any public comments for any items on closed session? Seeing none, we will adjourn into closed session. Thank you.